It's seven o'clock. If nobody has anything better to do, we'll get started. Call meeting to order. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cameron?
Present.
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Collier?
Here.
Mr. Beagle?
Here.
Mr. Peterman?
Here.
Mr. Black?
Here. Please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to my flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for a few little minutes of the last meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Collier?
Aye.
Mr. Beagle?
Aye.
Mr. Peterman?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Awesome. Welcome, everybody. What a great turnout. This is the part of the meeting for visitors and communications. We're going to start with Chief Kilgore. He's got some fun stuff to do tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight I had the great honor of awarding Officer Brandon Laffin with the Fort Thomas Police Life Saving Award. All officers were involved in a pre-scary incident back in October. Brandon was the first person there, and what I'd like to do is read you the commendation that we've written for him, written for him, and explain what happened. On October 25th, 2018, our officer who dispassed the 401 for a call of a person trying to jump out of a moving vehicle in order to harm himself. The caller was the person who was driving the vehicle, and she pulled over to the side of the highway to prevent the passenger from jumping out of her car. Officer Laffin was the first to arrive on the scene and located the caller and the passenger on the side of the highway. As Officer Laffin pulled up, he saw that the woman and the man were out of their car on the shoulder of the highway, and that the woman was trying to hold the man back to prevent him from running out into the highway traffic. This was about 2:30 in the afternoon on Friday. As Officer Laffin was getting out of his vehicle, the man pulled away from the woman and tried to run out into the highway. Officer Laffin reacted quickly and physically prevented this man from entering traffic. In doing so, Officer Laffin had to place himself in harm's way as he was in the right lane of traffic. Officer Laffin undoubtedly saved this man's life, and tonight he is receiving the Fort Thomas Police Life Saving Award. So we have a medal that Officer Laffin, they'll have to wear on his uniform. Get that, please. And we also have a plaque. If you have room wonder mantel next to all your trophies, I can present you with this plaque. And this says, "The Fort Thomas Police Life Saving Award is presented to Officer Brandon Laffin. On behalf of the city of Fort Thomas, Kentucky, we thank you for your heroic and selfless actions on October 25th, 2018. Your swift decision and willingness to put yourself in harm's way undoubtedly saved a life are to be considered."
Awesome.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, we have a very dedicated group of police officers and firefighters. These men and women know the risks that they face every day, come into work and they go out with a large amount of professionalism and courage. We're very lucky to have them, and we're all lucky to be a part of this.
Thank you so much, and we are very grateful for all the people who are involved with the city, and especially saving that man's life like that. That's awesome, and congratulations. What a great honor, and thank you for being with Fort Thomas. That's great. Appreciate it. All right. Moving along. Update on General Thomas statue. Chris Manning. And Bob Hile.
Evening, Mayor, the council. We were asked to come tonight and update you on General Thomas, and we're excited to do that. We're also joined by members of the committee here behind us. Officer White and Debbie.
We're going to pull the screen down, too.
Okay.
We're going to do this screen. Yeah, I turned around to look at it, and nothing was there.
There you go. You can leave those on. You're just doing the other one.
Okay. Is that good enough? That'll work, won't it?
Yeah.
The excitement builds. Melissa, can I advance from out here?
I don't know.
Try. See the worst.
Is that better? Okay. You can advance. We'll just queue you up, okay?
I can't see where I advance from.
Yeah, that's it, the arrow. Yeah.
There?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So through the many projects that Bob and I've worked on, and many of you, we've marveled at the fact that nowhere in the city have we celebrated our namesake, General Thomas. So back when we did the Midway Streetscape Plan, we decided it was time to put a stake in the ground and say, "General Thomas needs a statue here in the city." And so when we did that plan, we created this circular planter in the streetscape that you see there, and we put a marker in the bricks saying, "This is where General Thomas will be." And that started a journey of this desire to create the statue, but then that idea sort of went dormant for a little while. And it was actually with the Sesquicentennial that we were re-energized to say, "We really need to get serious about this. Pick a sculptor, raise some money, actually make this dream come true." And as we worked on that, particularly as we started to fundraise, the project sort of has evolved. And it's evolved enough that we wanted to come share that evolution with you and get your input and have a dialogue about next steps. So that's really why we're here, because when we left council last, this is where General Thomas was going to go, and that was going to be the scale, and now some of that has changed. So if we could go to the next slide.
Okay. So what's interesting about this is when we, as Chris mentioned during the Sesquicentennial, when the whole idea of, "Let's get this done," came up, we looked at a couple of different sculptors, but there was one that rose to the top, and he was somebody who had reached out to the city previously totally unsolicited. We did not do a formal RFP because it was not city funds that were going to be used, so we had the freedom to just do a quality-based selection process. And the sculptor that was chosen is Matt Langford. And Matt is quite an accomplished sculptor, and he approached us because of his love for this subject and the amount of research he had done on General Thomas, and he felt that he was more than deserving of our recognition beyond just the name of our city. So we embarked on a fundraising campaign, and you know what's really cool about this is that of the $45,000 that we've raised thus far, this money's come from some of our prominent citizens. It came from the white-on-white dinner. It came from students at our elementary schools. It came in the form of $50 checks and $25 checks. It was supported by the, during the Sesquicentennial, it was supported by the home tour that we did on Green Street, the Military Commons Homeowners Association. We donated all the proceeds from that. So it's been really far-reaching, and right now, we're about ready to go live with this website that you see here. In fact, I'm hoping that tomorrow morning, when I meet with the web designer, that we're able to flip the switch and be able to go live with this, at which time then we'll do some PR to get the word out. Hopefully, we can find somebody that might help us with some PR as it relates to this project. So if you will, Melissa, advance this slide a little bit. So this is Matt, and you can see he's done a number of really significant pieces of art in the past. If you've not seen Mary Ingalls, spectacular sculpture, Young Lincoln. But the thing I'd like to mention to you all is that Matt does this part-time, and he has taken this subject, and when we saw the original Maquette, which is a 12-inch tall statue of this, it's breathtaking. And Matt believes that this is the piece that will put him on an international stage as a sculptor, that this is the one, and that he will be able to actually finally be able to pursue his lifelong passion to be an artist full-time. We're going to give you a little glimpse, I think.
Yes, what's the next slide?
Some work in progress that hopefully will get you energized.
So what you see on the left is the Maquette that Bob referred to, and General Thomas is a field general. And he was in his field dress in the statue with his sword and his boots. He wasn't the kind of general that stayed inside and let other people do the fighting for him. He was out there with his men and well-respected in the field. The images on the bottom is the working process, full-scale. And...
It's actually nine feet tall.
It's nine feet tall. And you can begin to see the level of detail. Matt thinks very carefully about each wrinkle in the boot, each button. He's done research on the uniforms of the day, and particularly of General Thomas's uniform, and his sword, and his gloves, and his hat. Every detail will emerge from that. And he's also a very patient person in working with us as we do our fundraising. You know, he hasn't demanded payment as we go. We've been paying him as we can, and he's very patient. And these images were taken out of his studio in Union. Beautiful log cabin there next to a stream. So good progress on the statue itself, and we know we have the right sculptor. And as we have discussed, worked on this more and more as a committee, and particularly as we've listened to input from donors, some important questions started to come up, and we've been having inspired dialogue about the location in particular. There are some concerns about the Midway Corner, and they're valid concerns. It's a very busy street. The VA is right behind it, which we don't control that property. We don't know about the future of that property. There's not a lot of space there for leading tours. And, you know, is it the best place? And so the more we talk about it and the more we hear people's input, the consensus seems to be to move the statue to Tower Park, where after all, the remnants of the Ford exist and where most of the military activities historically took place. And so we feel like that's appropriate, and the more we've talked, the more we believe that that's the best choice. So we had a meeting onsite to talk about where in the park. And it's a beautiful park. Many different potential locations, strengths and weaknesses to all those locations, how exposed should he be, how visible, how much space around him should there be? You know, it's taken us 150 years. Let's make sure we make the right decision. So what we have next is a series of studies about where General Thomas might go. And we have five potential locations that we've studied. So option one is at the entry to Tower Park, opposite the tower. Option two is near the museum. Option three is at the intersection, when you come into the park, at the corner of the amphitheater, kind of the crossroads of the park. Option four is in front of the mess hall, and option five is opposite the armory. So we've developed more detailed site plans for each one of these options. So Melissa, if you would. So this is option one, a close-up. You can see the number one there. So he would exist in a new plaza opposite the tower. The plaza would match the plaza in front of the tower with the bands of brick and stone. He would sit there in the corner. There would be ample space for a classroom of children or a small group to stand around it and be part of an interactive tour. There would be landscape along the backside that would be echoed on the other side. And then something that we've been working with the city on for quite some time is a new accessible path that could connect from that corner down to the playground and the picnic area. So that could be incorporated as well. So that's one potential location. Lot of great visibility, a very good complement to the tower, welcomes you to the park, many strengths to this one. Let's go to option two. The museum. You know, the museum is really, thanks to Debbie's hard work, the museum has really taken off and grown. Our collection has grown. The interest in the educational activities there has grown, and someday in the near future, the museum's likely to grow. And so should he be there as part of the collection, as part of a new outdoor garden terrace that looks back across the valley over to the mess hall, and you see the tower in the distance, and you understand that this was part of a campus? And then some new improvements around the museum that would make for a more distinctive arrival, the ability to gate off the museum to limit access there, and some landscape enhancements, and then a staircase down to the amphitheater. Then option three is in front of the mess hall. You know, there's a boulder there now in the middle of the plaza where there's names in the bricks for donors that have helped pay for that. Would General Thomas be a better feature in that space than the boulder? Perhaps. And not only is it in front of the mess hall, you know, where the men gather, but it's also looking out over the parade grounds where many activities took place. So there's some strength there and some connection back to the old Ford and the activities of the Ford. Option four is at the corner, and this would welcome you as you come in to the park and would be a central focus of the park. Of course, the amphitheater is where we hold a lot of our activities, and so he would get a lot of pedestrian visibility and a lot of activity around him. And so this would be a new corner plaza. It would coincide with some of the roadway improvements that are being proposed around the mess hall as part of the Alexander Circle Project and as part of the comprehensive plan update that was done. Option number five is reaching out and making a connection to the armory. So this would exist directly opposite the front door of the armory, and the idea here is to build on the momentum of the Charters of Freedom as a feature in the park and make a stronger linkage with the museum and the armory by creating a new walkway that would arc along the edge of that green space, and it could also hold a series of other figures or signs or monuments that we're calling an officer's walk. So in addition to General Thomas, you know, there are colonels and majors and a whole group of leaders that were part of this Ford and part of the story, and maybe there's an opportunity to acknowledge them as well as part of a collection. I think the next slide is a repeat of the overview, which shows all five locations. So even as we talk about them, we know that there are strengths and weaknesses to each one, and we would like to get council's input, talk about what's the best process, who do we involve in that process, how do we make the best decision? I know we each have our favorite, and we like to talk about our favorites, but at the same time, this is a really important decision, so we want to make sure we do it right.
So as maybe a guide to get your head around some of these, the strengths and weaknesses of these, we created a little matrix to just tell us, help us guide our own views. And the things that, the criteria that we came up with was, for example, maximizing the number of people that have the potential to see the statue would be a criteria, and then we would apply a weight to that and a score, and then come up with a number.
Bob's the engineer in the group.
Yeah. So the second criteria was, to what degree is the statue continuously accessible? So if somebody wants to access the statue, is an event taking place going to preclude that? So, you know, like, I'll just use an example, like, if there's a wedding on the place outside the mess hall, and it's taking place, then somebody's not going to go in the middle of a wedding to see the statue, to view the statue, right? So another criteria, to what degree is it accessible? This obviously is an important one. Does the location give General Thomas the dignity that he deserves? Next criteria, does the location afford the opportunity for group activities? Which was what we viewed as one of the shortcomings of the Midway location is, you know, if we have a small class group or veterans group, Debbie's doing such a great job of recruiting these type of activities, to what degree does the location support that? And then I think it's important because the investment that's being made here, that does the statue, does the location perhaps pose a threat to vandalism or other physical damage to the statue? Because, you know, once this thing's cast in bronze, you know, you don't repair those easily. Let's just put it that way. So I just throw that out there as something to chew on as you're thinking about, you know, how would you arrive at this? And I'm sure others may come up with their own criteria, but this was our starting point.
And we'd be happy to share that.
So as the engineer, you did the matrix. Did you do the post-it notes? That's my question.
Always do post-its before we do drawings.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So anyway, I think we're open to discussion, to questions, to your guidance as council, and looking forward to next steps. And we'd like to make a decision, you know, relatively soon, because we do believe that will help with fundraising, and we may even do some visualization to help with that, too, once we know the location. So.
Well, I'm so grateful for you all's involvement in making this thing happen. And I think questioning the existing location where it was originally proposed was a smart thing to do. And you're right. Every one of those locations, each one has its pluses and minuses, and it's trying to figure out, okay, where's the best place? And Bob, I like the way you were looking at it, for most people not being influenced by other events, those kinds of things. The one that seemed least likely to me all of a sudden jumped up a notch when you suggested the walk with other generals and majors and that kind of thing across from the armory. I looked at the armory one, I thought, nah, nah. And then you said that, and tie in with the museum, and it was like, okay, that just bumped up a little bit. So I moved my sticky note from down here to up there. I can't resist this.
Well, I was going to say, you mentioned that, and the more we talked about it, and that's why we have this plan up here, to have this discussion, as we study these, we study them individually, but then as we stood back and looked at the whole, and we think about the work that Debbie's been doing and the tours and all that, we do believe that whether we put the statue in one of these locations or not, some of these enhancements...
Oh, yes.
Could be good for the park and good for a curated experience in the park, whether the statue goes across from the armory or not.
Yes.
That officer's walk...
Could still be.
Might be a good idea...
Yep.
Whether General Thomas goes opposite the armory or not.
The number-one location, that plaza there with the new entrance to, that can happen regardless of whether General Thomas is standing there or not.
That's correct. Yeah, so they're not mutually exclusive.
Right. And that's what we arrived at, was we suddenly looked at this and we said, "Holy mackerel."
There's all kinds of...
Thanks to Chris and his talent, we now have a master plan for the park if you want to embrace it.
Yep.
I mean, seriously. I mean, look at that, you know? And, you know, like, the realignment of Green Street that's already been taking place, you know, that's going to be a great enhancement and help safety dramatically. And, yeah, right there, you have a master plan in front of you if you want to embrace it.
So you're not looking for an answer tonight, but input from us? And does anybody have any comments now? Or do we want to... Like, I would like to go up there in the park myself and visualize and kind of stand around, and maybe when it's not so cold, but, you know. Any comments, thoughts?
What's the timeline? How long do you think before you can enter?
Well, the sculptor is going to be, he's only a couple of months away from sending it for casting. The plan was to unveil this in November, right after Veterans Day.
Oh, excellent.
In association with whatever week-long plan that Debbie puts together.
No pressure.
So, you know, Mayor, when you mentioned your thoughts, I was sort of the same thing that, I mean, the first thought that comes to mind is visibility, how people can see, you know, where's he going to get the most exposure, and the entrance would be that, I think that would be great there, but then, number three also, but then, as you went through it, wow, this walk with the Charters of Freedom and so forth, that sort of jumped up quite a bit, too. If you actually do the other things, if you don't do the other things, not as great. But I have to be honest with you, when I ran for city council, I did not run on a platform of word with this statue. And you all are, you know, you're professionals. If you're, Bob, an engineer, Chris, you're an architect, I mean, I'm just a lawyer, and so, I mean, we would be, I would be, just very interested in, you know, a recommendation, or at least, you know, what your thoughts are, what's coming, rising at the top from you.
Well, Roger, I appreciate that a lot. There's one person who is not here tonight who really needs to weigh in, and that's the sculptor. He really, he has a lot of weight in this, in my opinion, because he's going to be able to understand the context. To give you an idea, I mean, right out of the gate at the location at the Midway Corner, typical kind of rule of thumb is that a statue is 1.2 times the size of the subject, but Matt went out there and painstakingly took measurements and photographs and everything else, and he came back to us, the original cost, so you know, was $130,000, and he came back and he says, "Guys, for where it is, it needs to be nine feet," and it's jumped in cost. And we said, "If this is the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. We'll raise the additional money."
Is he aware that there's conversation about looking at the locations?
Yeah.
Is he okay with that?
Well, the hard conversations haven't taken place yet there.
I think he would share in our desire to have him in the best place. And I think Bob is correct that we need his input. But again, we wanted to come and update you. We owe it to you and the city leaders to have input as well and take all that into consideration and pick the best spot.
Because at the end of the day, this is a gift to the city from everybody who donates it, to it, and the city then takes on the care and maintenance of it into perpetuity. So there is an obligation that we do have to keep you informed.
Well, this is very helpful, and the designs are awesome. I mean, you're very skilled. Very skilled.
It's a fun project.
I mean, can you give us, I mean, maybe not here, but at some point, some sort of recommendation, taking all those architect and engineering and sculptor concepts into account?
If you want us to make a recommendation, we can do that.
Well, I would suggest you're probably, without curbing doubt, you would be better at it than I am. Or maybe just to see your thought process of...
Or maybe just the, to, to see your thought process of that matrix of what that looks like, and so we can kind of weigh the pros and cons that you guys have gone through.
And I would also recommend that everybody in council, including you, Roger, even though you're just a lawyer, maybe, maybe the next time you're up at the park, just kind of visualize those things, and if any of us have any thoughts, or, let's share it with them. And, but I, I tend to agree that, you know, you guys are the ones doing this, and, and, and Bob, I really like your concern about getting the sculptor involved, and maybe sharing, sharing this with him, and bringing him and looking at it. And if you guys plan a meeting sometime, and we want to invite council to attend the meeting, I think that will be kind of, and we could kind of hash that stuff out, because it is, it's a, it's a huge deal. And, you know, and any one of, any one of these locations would work great, so.
And while I, the engineer and me got to qualit, quantitative, there's qualitative aspects that we need to be certainly taken into consideration.
Sure, absolutely.
And your comment is a concern too, like you had mentioned. So, I mean, that thought press makes immediately to kind of wish that was a little bit out of the, out of the way. Like, I love in front of the mess hall, replace the boulders, my two cents, I think. That'd be a great location, still be visible, but when there's a high density during events, it's not gonna be right around the statue. That's my two cents, I think, for what I know right now.
Any other comment?
Chris, looks like you and I are gonna be busy with the rest of this design that you have.
I know, like, we needed more to do in the park, right?
Yeah, exactly. Nice job, though, guys. It's good stuff.
Thank you very much.
Hey, you might, I don't know, maybe, maybe flesh out that walk, you know, to, to site five, just a little bit more, just to help with the concept, to make, have better understanding of how realistic it is for some of that action.
Right.
And some of these locations, I assume, would take more infrastructure on the city's part to support than others.
True.
I mean, the little, you know, plaza area around.
Yes.
In front of the mess hall, you've basically blocked it there. Other places might require pads and other expenses.
Well, I assume it would be elevated regardless of...
It will be elevated on a base, and one of the newer members to our committee that just volunteered recently is Tim Rolfe of Rolfe Monument. Tim has done memorials and statues all over the region, and is a Fort Thomas resident, and really wants to help. And so whether it's a, a base below the bronze, or some sort of donor acknowledgement strategy in, in the paving, or in the walls, or the base, he wants to help. And he's a great resource too, so, yeah.
Since you mentioned that, a question on, on site three, I assume that that's kind of a staircase leading up to it. Is that what those rings represent?
That's paving, but it would be also a pedestal in the middle of that, so...
Oh, okay.
And again, each site, you know, we would have to look carefully with Matt about what height...
Right.
...the pedestal wants to be.
I, I thought those were representing stair steps, that people could actually sit around and watch the concerts and, and look up at...
Certainly could. Yeah, like I said, if we make a decision, we can do some visualization and study it in more detail, and we'll need to.
Okay. Great.
Well, thank you for your questions and comments and partnership.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. And again, council, when you get up there, look around, get some ideas, and let's, let's give them some feedback on this stuff.
Would it make any sense to refer this to the parks committee, or just...
We could. That's fine. And the parks committee could provide feedback to them. Certainly, it will be, I, I can't imagine it not being a part of the recreation committee discussion because of all the opportunities that are just presented in this idea of where do we put the statue, so.
Well, I'll make that motion again.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
We'll call it that.
Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Mr. Holly?
Aye.
Mr. Bezos?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, recreation. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address council at this point? Sure.
About this, or about anything?
About anything. Well, within reason. Please state your name and address to the record.
Tiffany Huber, can you hear me?
Yes.
Tiffany Huber, 26 Hawthorne Avenue. I know that some of you ran on transparency during the most recent election, and some of you have mentioned that you would like more community involvement from the citizens. Back in June of 2018, we kind of talked about the ability for the website, and, believe me, there have been some nice enhancements to the website, and I want to first say thank you for that. But I'd still like to get kind of an update on where we are with that, because I think it's so important that you have the opportunity to communicate with your constituents in a faster, more accurate way via the email communications, us being able to subscribe to the website. And Mayor, I know you mentioned that there was an NKU student who was working on our city website for a project.
Actually, NKU College for Informatics actually designed and built the website originally.
Okay, okay. So I guess I'm just wondering where that is, because there's also, I also want to make sure that the information that's on that website is accurate. I know, in terms of, you know, where this council can, you know, when it's re-aired, and where it's re-aired, whether it's fioptics or spectrum, you know, that's a way to pull other people in who maybe could not attend the council meeting. And I just think that, so I guess I'd like to first know, like, maybe when we can expect some of that functionality.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry.
The Law Labor License Committee of Council has studied the communication aspect, and maybe the reference with the mayor that you had questioned wasn't just the development of the website.
Oh, that's right, it's the committee, yes.
Sorry.
Yes, we actually worked with a class, a graduate student class at NKU.
Okay.
And they actually took it on as a project to look at our city specifically with regard to what options we have for communicating with our public. Law Labor License has met on two different occasions. So some of what you've referenced, you're starting to see on the website. There's intention to do more. We've talked about the subscription possibilities. We're also looking at our webmaster, which is the NKU informatics, because they designed the website. So some of the structural parts of it have to be updated in order to do that. But we're looking at creating potentially three moving parts, if you will. One of them would be just current events, if things happen, happen in the city, almost more in real time. So if there's something city-wide that might impact our residents, whether it's, a, a good example is, we had a boil water in a section of the city last week.
That's awesome.
We had some of the flooding, if there were accidents, or closures, or, or something like that. And then just the city events. The second part would be city business. So if you're kind of picturing three different windows, I'm picturing this, but it's not up yet.
Right, I understand.
So follow along, this is the concept that we've, we've agreed on, would be city business. So it would have stuff related to city meetings, whether it's word adjustment, tree commission, planning commission, council meetings, committee meetings, posting agendas, posting of information as it becomes available for those meetings.
That's perfect.
Perhaps reference to, you know, immediate, the minutes that were just previous meeting. The council meetings, as they are filmed, are posted. Do we post those, or are those from the school?
Broadcast, Highlands broadcast.
So they actually post them to our website.
I post them tomorrow.
You post them to our website, right?
I post them tomorrow.
So those are already accessible. When we receive them, we post them.
Okay.
And so they're already accessible on there. The third window, or third component, would be capturing the, more of a, I don't want to, I don't want to say educational, but more of a...
Reference.
Reference, reference material. So for example, during the snow season, what we would post in there, our snow removal policy, our leaf collection scheduling and, and policy.
Save some trees.
I'm sorry.
Save some trees.
Yeah. And, and then maybe some, some topic areas of, of interest in the community that have come up within a particular season. Sometimes they could be posted and repeated. Other times, they may just be sections of statute that are applicable to something that's going on in the community. So there's kind of some touchstones interactively in there, where it's updated on a continuum. You know, and I think council and the committee have recognized that we have certain limitations in-house with our ability to just assign something. That's a lot of work internally for somebody to update those things on a continuum. That's not something that we have been doing. However, we do feel like we can do some of these things incrementally, and that is our intention. But I think it's really important to note also that the Fort Thomas, the F T Community Plan dot com website, that was developed by our consulting team when we did the community plan process, we have just taken control of that as well. It's, it's, it's referenced by link on our website, and will continue to be referenced. And the intention is that we will use that to build from, as we do implementation phase of our community plan, that any committee meeting minutes or summaries, there's already some articles that are being written to post on there that reference kind of the concepts within the plan. So that document and that website will become, really become alive, or continue to become alive with the efforts towards the community plan.
Right. So are we talking weeks? Are we talking months? Are we talking years?
We're talking continually building everything that I just described. So I don't know that there's a start and stop point.
We just got iPads tonight. So, not to interrupt, but actually to interrupt, we, this has been, this has created a lot of really fun, exciting conversation amongst all of us about what we can do. And it included things like putting this and this up here, getting more technologically savvy, having everything, and it's, it's all part of that. And so, yes, it's in process, and we're still, it's like the link to the community thing happens today, you know? And last week, I kept saying, Ron, do we have that link? Well, the link's there, but no, that's just for the PDF. It's gotta be to the website. And there's still a little bit of technical confusion...
Right.
...about how to make it happen. But yes, it's been discussed in, in committee, and a, a good plan was, was generated from that. So you'll be seeing more and more as we get through along. I would say weeks to months, not years.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, don't...
Not to interrupt, to interrupt.
Yeah, go ahead.
But if you look at the sign, where, by design, and through committee, and through effort by council, it is designed to drive people to our website. We're, we're working on our newsletter that's mailed to every home, every residence in the community, that's a quarterly newsletter. But our intention is that our website, and, and more often than not, you would find anything that you're looking for in city business with us.
Right.
And so the drive is to the website, and the link off the website for the community plan for implementation. So that's a continuum. So we'll be continuing to add all those things. I just referenced some, some, we're writing information for the community plan. We're updating our website. We're working on our newsletter, and we're posting everything that we can as quickly as we can. So that's our intention.
I think, I think that's awesome. It was nice to hear that. I didn't think that you weren't working on it. It's just not fast enough. I'm sorry.
It's governed.
So that, that is good news. I do think, I do think the notification piece, the newsletter piece, in my mind, in terms of transparency and having people work together with you, that's gonna be your most important piece of that website. And the fact that you have people who are having to answer the phone constantly to ask about stuff related to meetings or whatever, that, some of that gets transitioned to them posting it on the website now, but once you train people to go to the website, they're gonna go there. Because I know with all the kids having laptops from school, I think in Campbell County, 80% of the kids that went to Campbell County, and I know I'm, my husband works there, I'm sorry, 90, or 80% of the homes had Wi-Fi and connection to this kind of stuff. So I know Fort Thomas is likely greater. So I just wanted to see where we were with that. And the other reason I think it's important too, is because we, especially with this new plan, I think having the transparency as we start to look at all different aspects of the, of the, the city, or the comprehensive plan, and all the things that are gonna be presented at these meetings, it's gonna be really important to keep the constituents up to date. The other thing I would like to ask is, if we could, we're, we're taping the council meetings, could we also ask HMS, or I'm sorry, Highlands High School Film and Broadcast to also tape the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings? I know other cities do that, and I think that would also be another level of transparency for the citizens of Fort Thomas. Would that be something?
We can ask them, but we can't force them.
Okay. Is that something...
I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a great partnership. They do that as part of our programming. I don't know what availability they have for students to be here and...
If they can't do it, can we figure out how to do it? Because...
We would prefer that they will come to our meetings.
We should be...
And participate in our meetings.
Well, we are, we do want to come to the meetings, but I'm gonna give you an example. I had three kids in 39 months, full-time job, I'm barely surviving on a daily basis, just managing the day-to-day. So sometimes the people who are physically here get to a point in their lives where they can, they can provide more time and energy physically here, but other people still want to view the meetings and know what's going on. I think that's a legitimate request.
Absolutely, it's something we can look at. Sure.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address council?
I'm hi, I'm Tom Morrison, 96 Hawthorne. And kind of a little bit of a follow-on.
Sure.
I've been trying to figure out, you know, when we call ahead and say, hey, what's happening on this date, and what's the agenda? Kind of goes along the same lines. I get a little confused at times of, what are these commissions and committees, and who is on them? Is there any way to just kind of have a, a summary webpage on the website that says, here's a list of formal commissions and committees that are providing input to the city, and here's his own?
I think that is why, I think we don't name the members of...
And maybe I'm...
It should be there, shouldn't it?
I, I can't find it.
Well, no, the days, the...
So, it's, it's not, but I'll, I'll tell you, in the discussions that we had on law, law labor license, that was a specific bullet point that we requested as well.
And then the other thing, it's kind of a bolt, oh, go ahead.
Not to interrupt, but in line with that, I think part of the intention, that, that kind of third window that I talked about, or really either one of those two, it, we could do a summary of not only who's on them, but kind of what their function is.
That'd be great.
You know, so that was kind of the educational part of it, because a lot of times people's like, I don't know what a design review does, or I don't know what responsibilities a tree commission has. So kind of a brief summary of what they do, when they meet, what their regulatory requirements are, potentially, and then, and then who's a serving member.
Yeah, and, and any kind of summary information like that, that you kind of have a clear spot to go figure that out, because it, it has tech, quite honestly, it's befuddled me to try to find this stuff. I mean, I've, I've looked around, I'm like, I'm trying not to call in, I'm trying to, you know, self-investigate, but, you know, it's just, it's difficult. The, the other thing, and you kind of already mentioned it, if you have that, and is there a possibility of having a calendar that just shows, here's what's going on, here's the people that are meeting, and here's the dates?
Yes, actually, that was another part of the discussion in committee, is, is creating a, a community calendar that's accessible on the website, that talks about the only events, but city meetings, all those things.
Okay, yeah, perfect, because I think of all the things I look for, those are the two things that I, I go there thinking, I'm gonna find these right away, and, and then I, I go to every link and the FAQ link, and, and I don't find them. So if you do, either or both of those, it'd be extremely helpful.
And again, admittedly, we don't have in-house technology people running our website, and, and that's part of the delay. I picture the things that I just described to you, and we talk about them in committee, and, and as a council, you know, it's, we're all kind of guilty of all the new technologies where you just pull screens and move stuff. And we don't, we don't do that that easily yet. But each one of those components will... we don't, we don't do that that easily yet. But each one of those components will provide an opportunity to do, for example, a community calendar of events. And also, when you're on that second thing that I described, you could have a, a community calendar of city business meetings. And so you separate the two.
So I don't know the technology that's behind the website, but I can tell you, I'm in IT. And, you know, at some point, if you're seeking some help and some volunteer, we, we can figure out some people to help you with that. I, I'm more than wel- willing to, to figure that out and obviously not step on the toes of the people that are maintaining it ongoing. But a couple of things, like a few pages for a calendar that's easily updated by an admin and, and a contact or a list of member sheet of the committees, I, I don't think we're talking even days of work. I think we're talking.
No, I agree. Those items are permanent.
Yeah, okay.
Excellent.
Ross, you mentioned putting the summaries about all these committees due. Any interest of, you know, cost or some of those time doing it? I've bet the Kentucky City Cities may have that type of material already, that we could just, they very well may have that. If they don't, we can ask them to do it. Or we could get an intern, political science major at NKU as a, you know, project. I mean, that would be a great pay for students to just, you know, because we're pretty tired of their stamp time here in the city. And that's something that we could outsource definitely.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address council? Sure, come on up.
Bonita Frenzel, thirty-five Bonnie Lane, Fort Thomas. And I just want to say kudos on the calendar suggestion, because sometimes it's the third Tuesday of the fourth week of the ninth month, unless there's a holiday. And it's like, I missed it.
And subtract two during a leap year.
Exactly. So I just wanted to kind of give support on that. And then if by some chance that the monument should go by the mess hall, the people that did jump in on bandwagon early on and said, I want my, my block here, you know, my little brick, and they selected where they were putting it, who's going to determine where those bricks are going to go as they have to probably be moved around for input? Because I know, I've been wanting to add more family members as I can. And I know my mom did, and then a friend of hers died, and she put a brick there in honor of her because she was forever in the city and very solid person, a solid person in the city. And like, for me, I couldn't participate this year with the banners. And I have my grandfather, my dad, my uncle, we were all, you know, they were all military people that I would love to have honored them, but I just couldn't participate this time. Is there any other opportunities for those kind of things to come up that, as my financial status changes a little better, that maybe I could participate and help increase the honor of our citizens that we've had in the past and our military members in the past too? So if and when the, the suggestion about where the monument goes, it'd be nice to still allow those of us that can't afford white on, on white dinners to at least have some kind of little input or information that we might be able to contribute our two cents worth.
Sounds great. Good ideas. Would anyone else like to address council? All right, we will go down to reports of officers, Fire Department monthly report. Chief Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor Boss. I'm the councilman. As you can see from the two reports in December, January, obviously, we've been very busy in the fire department. A lot going on. There's been a lot of months here. As you can see there, run-wise, in eighteen, we made seven hundred and seventy-three runs, seventeen hundred and seventy-three runs, which is fifty-seven less than in two thousand and seventeen. But again, those numbers fluctuate from year in and year out. Obviously, you have to ride the schools, and those are just as much fun for the children and the families as they add much for the fire department too. We really enjoy doing it. It's great PR. And so, again, a lot going on, December, Holiday Walk, et cetera, we finished up with. One nineteen, just some things there. Again, we filmed and broadcast from Highlands High School, Chris Rusper, a recommendation, and they received an award from Northern Kentucky Firefighters for, again, year in and year out, for the number of years they've been doing our public service announcements during Fire Prevention Month at the, at the football games. And again, a very nice award given to Highlands High School for that particular activity, events that they've been doing again through the NKFA and associations there, associated with that. Again, the Kids Expo, I think they've got some work to do with that, get a good time with that, and Moyer Safety Fair, and the CPR event, which is a very, very quick. And we did at Highlands High School, again, the CPR Hands Only Event. We did the football game, come back at the basketball game. And obviously, Mayor Boss and Mr. Donald were able to get some great, you know, information out to those people at that game. So, yeah, a lot going on. We'll continue on it in February here. You'll hear some things in the next month report. But we're, we're again very busy, day in and day out. And again, very active with the fire department. So if I could answer any questions in regard to the fire department in general, or anything that you guys might have questions on. But that's, I'm just a summation of the two months there, since we don't normally get to do two months in a row. So, if there are any questions you might have.
Chief, I just wanted to commend the department's response with the home fire on Delta. You know, that's, that's an obvious, quick response by the department.
Yeah, they did a good job. Very proud. Again, the whole department, ship two was on that day, Captain Amin and the associate, as a ship personnel. But again, we did a great job as usual. Obviously, as well fires need some help from our supporting agencies and departments. But again, they did a good job. Did some investigation on that. But again, yeah, very proud of them too. Thank you, Mr. Boss.
Any comments, questions? In motion. Would you receive a call?
Second.
Second.
Hold call, please.
Mr. Hillman?
Hi.
Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Mr. Collier?
Hi.
Mr. Beadle?
Hi.
Mr. Deere?
Hi.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Police Department monthly reports.
Thank you, Mayor. In the month of December, I'd like to highlight that our officer participated in the annual housing kids program. This is a program where our lodge raises money to take kids shopping for Christmas parties that we may not have gotten otherwise. We had nine officers participate. It's nearly half the fire department. It's a great showing for us. We had seventy-three kids from Campbell County show up, participate. And it's always a fun day for the officers and sometimes their life along the way. But we had a great day, and it was nice to see some new people be able to show up today. January, I'd like to highlight Sergeant Hunt and Officer Wolford taught at the Health and Safety Fair at Ruth Moyer. That's an annual event for them. And they focused on some of the four current topics that we did on four of the fifth graders, such as online safety, especially with all the games that our kids are playing these days, they're always online, and someone else can do it, they are. So they talked about that, and I feel they've reached out to kids that age and made a good day. Those are the two highlights from December and January. But on behalf of the other questions, if there are any questions.
Questions? Ruth in motion. Would you receive a call? Second. Second. Hold call, please.
Mr. Cam?
Hi.
Mr. Brendan?
Hi.
Mr. Lloyd?
Hi.
Mr. Beadle?
Hi.
Mr. Deere?
Hi.
Mr. Black?
Hi.
Great, thanks, Chief. All right, City Administrator's report.
Okay. Just reporting on a couple of items, you will be seeing our annual reports from our department heads starting next month. I believe we have Abby and Kevin Garvian will be here next month to do annual reports from two thousand and eighteen. And the following month, you'll have the safety department's reporting. In your packet, you received annual reports from two thousand and eighteen for animal control activity and the report put together through our police department for deer-related accidents. That report also has the, the history dating back to two thousand and three, when we first started logging that information. So both of those are annual reports. Didn't know if anybody had any questions on those before we move on from that topic.
Ross, just one quick question. Kind of odd question, but the number of cats caught in twenty-eight, was drastically lower. So was there a change in hours worked? Just that up to me?
Yes. Very nice of you to pick up on that. There was actually a, a program that was initiated. And Joe is our representative with our, our group for, that, that composes our animal control group. So he's our representative, and I'll let him explain the cat program.
Campbell County actually got into a program that is already in effect throughout, around the country and actually specifically in Canyon County. It's, it's the Community Cat Program. So as opposed to, as opposed to.
We didn't name it, the Community Cat Program.
As opposed to what we've, what we've done, what shelters have done in the past traditionally is really euthanize a substantial amount of animals. And, and the goal of this program is really to reduce that number and to really have a healthier cat population. So what it boils down to is, as opposed to catching and holding these cats at the shelter for a period of time and then euthanizing them, the, both the shelter staff and our animal control officer, Terry Baker, actually capture the animals, have them spayed or neutered, and then actually release them back where they were, where they were picked up. The idea being, if it is a cat in the neighborhood, it actually, obviously already has a food source if it's alive. The spaying and neutering actually reduces the aggressive behavior of the animals and actually controls the population, obviously, if you're spaying or neutering them. So the reason you've seen a reduction in the cats, cats caught, and it's pretty much across the board, and there are actually further, further numbers from the shelter of the number of cats that they've caught and held or really even come in contact with. All these numbers are really down because of this Community Cat Program.
That's great. But, I mean, the funding is from?
The funding actually right now is through a grant. We are in the, and I can hear Lisa Crumman from the shelter yelling at me right now, going into the third year of the grant funding, I believe. This is actually a national program funded through, I can't think of the nice doctor's name that runs it, and I can't think of the name of the organization that funds it. Somebody else is going to be yelling at me for that. It's grant funding. After the grant runs out, which we anticipate will be possibly after next year, the county's actually agreed to pony up some funds to continue this program because it's been so effective. And there may be some additional on the municipalities. We haven't really discussed it yet. At this point, the county seems like they're really going to continue the funding now.
That's great. Are, are residents happy with that process versus, I mean, it's, it seems a little counterintuitive to put it back?
It's, it's really extremely counterintuitive. And there are a lot of us, I'll, I'll count myself as somebody who is skeptical of how this was going to work and looking at the results, looking at the numbers, county, county-wide, area-wide, nationwide, it's really quite effective. So as far as issues from the community, we've had a couple, not necessarily in Fort Thomas, we've had a couple in, in Campbell County, but far less than I would have anticipated. And the issues that we had were actually taken care of really quite easily.
Yeah, the initial reaction was, if you take it, I don't want it back in my neighborhood. And in reality, that is the proper way to, it's migratory. So if you take them out, then other stray cats will occupy that space and populate itself.
Rick, yeah, thank you.
Learned something.
I found it interesting too, that our deer accidents are about cut in half from twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen to eighteen, from twenty-nine down to fifteen. That's encouraging.
I just hope you don't ask me to explain that. But yes, it is.
Yeah.
It's the cats.
It's the cats, yeah. That must be it.
Okay, moving on, I just had a couple of more items to touch on. There were some inquiries in, in the office regarding some issues on Memorial Parkway. And I just wanted to make comment on that. We've had some complaints in the office, and we've been working with specifically a couple of areas along Memorial Parkway where water is entering the road. And in our freezing temperature conditions, we're experiencing, you know, icing conditions. We assist the state, that is a state route. We do assist the state by placing salt on that street because it's an arterial street in and out of our community. It is their primary responsibility for longer-term maintenance issues. So we are working with them. We have also done work, you may have seen our crews down there, trying to alleviate some of the seepage of water that's been present on our sidewalks that go down through some of those same sections of Memorial Parkway. But some of the other items related to getting onto the actual pavement are issues that the state is working through, potentially with some abiding property owners, but through improvements that they'll make within the night anyway. So, you know, we're, we're on top of that. We're working with our local representatives out of their maintenance division in Campbell County and with their district office. A couple, another item that has been brought up, and I just want, and I'll ask the chief to comment on this as well, and I'm going to pass this out. We've, we've continued to have dialogue with our schools regarding pedestrian safety. And if you recall, we, we have actually labeled that as a pedestrian safety initiative, and it dates back to kind of the beacon lighting that, that we have instituted in front of Moyer Elementary. And we have pending applications with the state for, for additional locations at school in our community. What I passed out to you is information that we shared with the schools when we first started with the beacon lighting at Moyer. So this, this is kind of a overview, if you will, that originated a couple of years ago, still parting in today. So we are in a continuum, and, and this is what we'll reissue to the schools when we get into placement of the additional beacons. But I know the chief has been working with Zach Goffr. We've worked with the principals in the school through the school administrations to highlight the necessity of the students being a party to pedestrian safety. Obviously, we, through this council, designated a traffic officer, which you've heard reporting from over the last six, eight months. So there's a concerted effort within the city to address the issues of speeding, to address the issues of pedestrian safety. But it is a bigger issue, and it requires everybody to be a part of that. Our traveling public, whether they're driving, cycling to our pedestrians, whether they're jogging or walking to our students that are traversing the streets in their crosswalks to and from school. So it, it, it's really an effort that's going to take all that participation to put devices up. But that in and of itself is not going to alleviate the issues that concern that people could have. So educational component is really important. Again, we're working with the schools, and I know that they have taken time out of their schedule with their students to address the issue. We're trying to create some tools for them. And I'll let the chief explain kind of this latest initiative that we have. And then I'll update on the actual people.
Yes, sir. I think our next step, what our partnership with school, is going to be to film actual educational video for pedestrians and motorists. And focus of that would be, number one, different types of crosswalks that we have around town. Because Ruth Moyer has a flashing beacon. We have certain crosswalks that are at and intersection with stop signs that will alert stopping. And we also have crosswalks that are mid-block where vehicles aren't required to stop because there's a stop sign. We'd like to educate both on motorists and pedestrians in different types of crosswalks. And also, the shared responsibility of both motorists and pedestrians to make that, those intersections safe. So if your pedestrian needs to make sure that motorists are actually seeing them and stopping before they walk out of the crosswalk. And if you're driving a car, you can remind all the people that also in the crosswalks at various locations throughout the city. So our next step there is to feature also offered in the video that we do in the public on our webpage with our schools and hopefully, schools show that to all students. Additionally, a device that we purchased last year, the visual speed display device, has become very popular. And we have placed that at locations that actually show the speed for vehicles approaching crosswalks. And that has been very popular. We've seen by our citizens, we've had a lot of calls asking that it stay where we put it and then it rotates on to the next street. And when are we going to get back? We've been quite happy with the progress we've made with that sign. People really appreciate it being at areas that have high congestion. So those are the two big things that we're working on in the next month or so.
We're actually, we're actually authorized to purchase the second.
The second street signs, you're doing what?
And, and to update the installation, we are this close to our permits with the state finally. So by all accounts, they'll be authorizing or issuing those permits immediately. And our intention was to do first installation coming into spring break. So when the students return from spring break, it's, it's our hope that the. So when the students return from spring break, it's, it's our hope that the installation at the North Fort Thomas Avenue, Memorial Parkway, um, crosswalk will be installed at that time. There'll be bump outs that are required at the other locations, um, so we'll be working those into our schedule, um, likely to have, well, we will have all of them done before next school year, uh, but at what increments we're able to get those installed depend a little bit about how, how we can work around the school schedule. Um, but coming out of spring break will be important, as you know, um, Johnson Elementary will be relocating to the Highlands Campus, and I know that the police department's working with the school officials on, you know, all the issues of crossing students in and around Highlands Campus, so that'll be an important part of that, and hopefully that additional safety feature will be installed at that location, so that's why we're on with that.
Just a side comment, I've noticed more people stopping at mid-block crosswalks than they did in the past, so this is definitely working, because in the past, I stopped, and nobody else would stop, and they were gonna have me funny, and I'd pull out in the middle lane, kind of block them because I saw them, and now I see people doing it, so I think this is great. I think the video's a great idea. We can make it go viral.
And, and it's really, really important for people, and it's referenced in here, that the students need to learn that eye contact. One of our most recent incidents was they hit the button and started into the, into the crosswalk, and, you know, and, and, you know, accidents happen, but sometimes, you know, drivers are not alert, and, um, you know, so there's, there's, you know, it's literally everybody making sure that we have that as eye awareness. Um, I think the last item I had is we'll be scheduling some committee meetings, and the, the chief has been working on hiring, um, so we'll be asking the Public Safety Committee to meet perhaps the week of March eleventh, so I'll send something out to those committee members, and I believe we have the Recreation Department, or Recreation Committee scheduled, and we may reschedule it for the same day, uh, perhaps on March eleventh, so I'll be reaching out to, to the council and to see if they can schedule it. Additionally, the Finance Committee will be asked to meet, to review audit, um, so we'll be doing that March as well. That's all I have.
All right, on to new business report from Law and Labor License Committee.
Okay, um, I think Ms. Huber stole a lot of our committee reports from Law and Labor License, no, I'm kidding. Uh, we did have a lot of discussion on, on upgrades of communication, and as we discussed earlier, um, some of those are taking place in, in the pipeline. Additionally, the, that committee is recommending adoption of ordinance O two, uh, twenty nineteen, which is on your agenda for today, um, amending the Personnel and Policy and Procedures Manual, so that will be highlighted in, in the reading of that ordinance. And the committee also did review of the Business Grant Program, which is, which is a new initiative, um, and it was well received in committee, and referred to staff for a final draft and a process delivery of all the necessary, um, application forms and processes that would be in place for that program to be initiated. That will be reported back to committee and council for next meeting. And I think that was everything from Law and Labor License. No?
All right, um, so we, uh, two thousand and nineteen street resurfacing permit.
Okay. Um, there's really two parts of that, and Mr. Bowman, I don't know if you wanna report out a committee for the program itself?
I-
We do have a summary there.
Yeah, I did not prepare. There is a summary?
Up the screen. You don't have it again?
I'm not seeing, do you wanna go ahead and run?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, I apologize, I thought we had a copy of a summary. So the committee did meet, um, we meet annually with our city engineer and staff to develop our program, um, and we do have a program developed for this year that includes, um, Ohio Avenue, Ridgeway Avenue, Sherman, Sheridan, Grant Street, and Fairview, which are all located behind Woodville Elementary, um, Ohio and Ridgway are in the middle of town, Vernon Lane, which has been discussed for a long time, and was deferred multiple years due to the SD one work, um, that was scheduled, um, and they are completed, so that street is way past due, um, so that's included in this year. And then the last street is North Fort Thomas Avenue from Covert Run to the Corporation Line of Dayton, and that portion of road, of course, is the same section of road that is scheduled for sidewalk installation. Um, it is also scheduled for a water main replacement, um, so that's a, it is in the program for this year. There is some potential that that, um, actual resurfacing might be deferred into next year, um, but that, that all will be dependent on scheduling for those other two projects. Um, so that is the recommendation of the committee, um, is to accept those, um, for the program next year.
It seems like a lot, are there more funds available, chief?
Or is it just the cost of each one?
I think it's just cost and, and it seems like a lot more because we've done reconstruction of streets in, in two of the last three years, and so the number was a lot lower. We've done as many as eleven or even thirteen streets a year, depending on their size, obviously, and the cost.
Yeah, well, in, in that regard, are there any of these big reconstruction things in the foreseeable future?
Yes, we've had some conversations. I know, I know.
Why'd you ask?
They're, so what we try to do, um, as a strategy is really kind of alternate those every two or three years, maybe get into one of those, because they take such a large portion of, of the budget, um, so we kind of reserve for those and try and stretch those out a little bit, um, which is another reason for the increase. I will add, um, one street that was under consideration and it certainly will be is Waterworks Road, um, and I am happy to report that our conversations with SD one, um, has revealed, and we've, we've been insistent with them, that they addressed the issues of storm drainage and overflows, uh, both their sanitary and storm lines on Waterworks Road. They've acknowledged that, but they actually put that under study, and it is now scheduled to be funded as a project.
Good.
Um, so they will be replacing all of the lines of both sanitary and storm. So it'll be a lot of work on Waterworks, and of course, after they're finished, we would follow up with our street program. So that is the recommendation out of committee. The other item discussed in committee, and you saw a glimpse of it, and Melissa, you can pull that up, um, that area around the mess hall and the ball field and leading to Alexander Circle has been under study with our engineers, I've referenced this in the past. The committee was able to see this and, and basically make recommendation to move forward. Um, just highlighting a little bit, this would be, um, Douglas coming in, so the tower situated here, um, you can see a reconfiguration of the intersection, uh, that is in part designed because it's a two-way inner, two-way traffic.
I'll be vanishing.
There you go. Um, leading back to that intersection, which will become the entrance of Alexander Circle proper. So that's part of our development agreement with the developer of Alexander Circle, um, to create that intersection, and of course, um, provide for two-way traffic, which will now come out, before you jump there, um, which will now come out in front of the mess hall, that will be a two-way street with no on-street parking. Um, to duplicate or reproduce parking, you can see the configurations that are there. The entrance will come off of Douglas into the parking lot, um, as you enter into the park, before you get to the mess hall, there is a connectivity behind the mess hall, uh, but it won't necessarily be a primary connection between the two parking areas. Um, the second parking lot, as you can see in the, in this configuration, would lead to, uh, a reconstruction of the parking that runs adjacent to the ball field, if you pulled the other one out. Um, you can see where the additional parking runs back to the ball field. Um, secondarily, there'll be a continuation of pavement around the ball field, but it will not be an accessible road for everyday use. So that design was studied in committee and brought forward. That will require a, a fund transfer to do those improvements, um, that's a one-time fund transfer, um, and it'll be in our amended budget, um, to fund this as a separate project.
Is there an engineer's estimate?
Uh, well, excuse me. There is, um, an engineer's estimate, and, and that is, uh, within the five hundred mile range, it is scalable, and our intention is to do some of that work in-house, um, with, with city crews, and we'll save significantly by doing so.
This is the, I mean, you're thinking tower park fund, or?
It'll be a transfer, um, from reserve into the road eight part.
Oh, this would be roadie?
Yeah.
Not park?
Right. Because we will bid this as an alternative for the asphalt work with our road.
What, what is that pinkish shade?
Um, that is pavement that is removed within the project limit, so those are existing pavements that are removed, and that's an important aspect, and it's actually been submitted to SD one. Um, so we're required to gain approval from SD one for hard, hardscape, uh, for, for stormwater retention requirements. We think inclusive of this and the Alexander Circle, which is not shown completely on this, um, schematic, that it balance in terms of the amount of pavement.
Well, could, I mean, maybe look at this, is that, so that, that parking, having the term is, you know, where, you know, water will flow through the surface, whatever the term is.
Pervious, non-pervious, or?
Yeah. It was that thought of or looked at for some?
It's not a design that we have here, I mean, everything we have is, is, uh, a regular circle's to pavement, and, uh-
I guess that's pretty expensive.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're talking, typically you had a drainage bed under it, so it's long, so.
And you're not, and increase your segment.
The parking, uh, actually, I don't know the exact number because it's been in flux, but I think will actually be to the floss in terms of total amount of parking under this schematic.
Yeah.
The ones that we lose on the street in front of the mess hall are basically due to paving in that first lot, and the rest of it kind of balances in the door.
All right. All right. That concludes my report.
There you go. Well done.
Good job.
So, uh, with that, you'll need approval and report, um, authorizing staff to proceed with the program, um, or intend to proceed.
That sounds good, somebody wanna say so moved?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any other discussion? More call vote?
Mr. Campbell?
Hi.
Mr. Bowman?
Hi.
Mr. Falyer?
Hi.
Mr. Beazel?
Hi.
Mr. Bier?
Hi.
Excellent.
Okay, consideration of Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act. Earlton?
Okay, um, this is an agenda item, and you do have in your packet a, kind of a comparative analysis, and I know, um, this is, uh, the Uniform Residential Landlord and Tenant Act is a state, um, regulated, um, I guess, standard, is the best way to put it, it's a statutory scheme, um, that has been brought forward, uh, for consideration by council, um, and I know we do have Judge Blau in attendance that wanted to speak to this, um, so we'll certainly invite him to the podium, and I, he may give better justice to the, to the detail of this.
I appreciate the opportunity.
And Judge, if you wanna flip that.
Thank you.
If you're not gonna use that.
Thanks.
With that being said, thank you for allowing me just to take a few minutes of your time to speak. Uh, it's gonna be hard contesting with the cat program, uh, with obviously, uh, members of our law enforcement saving people. Uh, but with that being said, I am glad that you gave me the opportunity, uh, to try to wake you up after over an hour of all these committee hearing and reports to speak about the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act. I'm just gonna call it the act because it is an absolute mouthful to say every single time. Uh, I do have quite a bit of experience in this, having been a district judge now for several years, and we, of course, have an eviction process every Tuesday here that goes on in Campbell County at eleven o'clock in the morning, for which I get to hear all of these cases. The one thing that's important is uniformity, uniformity in our community, uniformity throughout our state. Uh, it makes it more efficient, it makes it nice for tenants that they know what their rights are going into each community, what they are, and it's fantastic for our landlords who candidly usually don't own property in just one city, they own it usually in a community or, or an area. And this has been adopted primarily in Kentucky, in Northern Kentucky, and in Campbell County, and in fact, besides the unincorporated portions of the, uh, like, community, I guess, here in Campbell County, the only holdout is Fort Thomas. Alexandria just adopted theirs back in, uh, the middle of last year, so literally the city of Fort Thomas is the only one, and that's why I bring it to your attention. And I'm gonna go over, just sort of highlight about seven points, but before I, I go over, well, actually, I'll, I'll move down, uh, first and foremost, besides the fear pressure that I wanna put on you to be uniform, um, it's the, uh, the tenant's responsibilities. When I say it's about uniform, as you can see under the little hand that was provided to you, the tenant's obligations, they have certain obligations under this. So the landlord is, if for some reason they enter into or don't have a contract, or that contract expires, or that lease expires, this spells out very clearly what a tenant's obligations are to that property. In the same vein, it also spells out very clearly what the landlord's responsibilities are. Why it's important that a landlord has responsibilities, well, besides, of course, they have to comply with your local ordinances about habitability, that's mouthful, English hard, um, the, I guess the real important part is a nice, clean, safe environment, that's what Fort Thomas stands for, that's what the landlord should stand for, because when you have a clean, safe environment for a child to go home to, they are more productive, which means they're more likely to learn in your school system, and that's why people wanna come to Fort Thomas. Everyone knows it's one of the number one areas for education, and providing that safer environment by requiring landlords to have that obligation is also very important. And it's also nice for the landlords because the tenants have certain obligations. And again, a lot of leases don't provide for it, and this gives the, everyone the opportunity to know when they're going into a piece of property what it's about. The other one, of course, is the standardized legally defensible and articulable situation that's created when you come into a courtroom. I have to have, I have to know, of course, several different areas of law, it's very nice, though, when everyone, when I sort of give it an opening, to sort of have uniformity, except when I say except Fort Thomas, if you're in the city of Fort Thomas, there is a different standard for which then, that is a different set of laws. That lack of uniformity causes a burden, it causes a burden on, of course, the court system, it causes a burden on the landlords, and it causes a burden on the tenants because they don't know what they're walking into. It's very difficult, even as an attorney, to describe what the, the different obligations are if they don't realize that an act has been, or this has been adopted or it hasn't, which is very unusual, but with a fragmented community like ours, which is no longer fragmented, it's only Fort Thomas, so it would be nice to give that uniformity to those defending themselves in an eviction proceeding, those moving forward with it, those that have legal representation, that they know what they are dealing with. And the law is spelled out very plainly and very clear on its face. The other issue is security deposits, it's one of the, the number one complaints, uh, that, well, of course, we hear because I also do small claims, that's usually where you find a, um, a security deposit. Right now, there is no laws that relates to the security deposits, how someone takes that money in, where it's deposited, how it's regulated, when it, should it be returned, unless the lease provides for it. Under the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act, that is spelled out very clearly, a landlord does have certain obligations, they have to deposit into a separate account, that account has to be kept separate, they have to have a tick list when someone moves in, which also holds them accountable to make sure that says, that, okay, the paint is chipped over here, we're gonna paint this room, this is what's going on, and it also then gives uniformity, so when someone leaves, they could say, well, they damaged the property, well, it's not on the tick list, or it is on the tick list, and then they have to use that same tick list when someone, uh, leaves that residence, that way that, then they can return that security deposit or hold it, it also provides an opportunity for a landlord not to try to locate that person, uh, it actually will defer back to that landlord if, for any unpaid rent, if there is a dispute within thirty days. So there's a lot of benefits for both the landlord and tenant. Access to rented property. Landlords need access to that rented property to make repairs, to visit with that property, uh, to check on it, if they have complaints, they wanna make sure to see that everything is okay, that's moving forward with it. Right now, a landlord, unless your lease provides for it, there's no access unless you get a court order. This actually provides a landlord an opportunity with, to get forty-eight hours' notice during regular business hours to go in and view that property, to deal with an issue that may have been brought to light, and it gives reasonable notice. So it protects the property, it protects the tenants, and it protects the landlord and gives them access because candidly, if a landlord and tenant are in a hot dispute, if you think regardless of what's going on in that household, that they're gonna let a landlord in over- over some dispute, you're incorrect. But I doubt anyone would actually think that, because that's the truth. You're mad at someone, you're not going to want him on the property. Landlord has an obligation to maintain that property, but can't unless this is allowed. It makes it a lot easier for that landlord to move in and help and assist with the issue, even if there is some sort of hot button topic going on between the parties. Lastly, retaliation. It happens. It's an unfortunate thing in our community, but I see it every single day. And in fact, neighbor disputes are the worst thing in the world to deal with. Then as a district judge, even as a prosecutor, they are awful. A landlord tenant is a neighbor dispute times three. However, if there is an issue between it, this protects the tenant from retaliation. And in fact, the sanctions are rather significant. So it deters that kind of activity and makes sure that the landlord plays fair, and it makes sure that the tenant has certain obligations to make sure that they maintain that property. The one thing that I haven't mentioned, and I want to save to last, is what are the obligations? What is the benefit to the landlord? Landlord is not in the business of throwing people out. People always feel bad and say, oh, the landlord is being mean, that they want to evict this person within seven days versus 30 days, or some other random number. A landlord just wants to be paid. They want to make sure the property is maintained, and they want to receive payment. They're usually not looking to kick someone out. In fact, that costs them money. That's what this, uh, uh, I guess, attempts to avoid and make uniform and consistent. If, under the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act, and it's non-payment, which candidly is the number one reason people usually get evicted here in this community, you have seven days' notice has to be placed on the door after they have been non-compliant with their lease agreement or the monthly payment. Within that seven-day period, if the tenant can pay in full within that seven-day period, the landlord cannot evict. Whether they like it or not, they cannot evict, because, and they have to accept that money within seven days. After the eighth day, though, they can move forward with the eviction. Why that is so important is because the landlord has to pay quite a few things. To maintain that property, they have to maintenance. They still have probably a mortgage on that property that they have to maintain. And of course, the city loves to get their taxes. So those are obligations that the landlord has to pay. And if they're not getting paid, then they're unable to provide and maintain that building, to keep it clean. In fact, may even lose that property. And it's unfortunate, because they couldn't act quickly. If they have to wait 30 days, the new appellate decision that came down a couple of years ago says that they have to wait actually until after that 30-day period has expired, after they've given notice. If they take a single penny from that tenant, then that, actually, that clock starts back over. And a lot of landlords don't realize that, especially in this community. That may just rent property, sort of a inherited building, or bought a duplex, thinking they'd be nice. Someone rents it, they say, hey, I have a, you know, I'm having really financial difficulty. They feel very bad about it, and they take $100, and they promise that next week they will make good on the other six, seven, eight thousand dollars it may be. They don't. They file the eviction, they come see me, I have to kick it out, because why? Under oath, they just testified they took $100. So now you've wasted, you have to wait 30 days, and then you can file. Usually takes about seven to 14 days to get into court. So you're talking already a month and a half. If they've taken money, have thrown it out, now they have to start that process again. So now you're at two months. And then by the time you grant the eviction, they have seven days to vacate that property after they get rid of possession. So by the time everything's said and done, they're probably talking well over two months. It's a landlord being out at least two additional months, and usually, they don't file when they're just one month late. Usually, it's two or three months late. So now someone is out four, five, maybe even up to six months' rent by the time they have it. The Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act, it allows a landlord to act quickly. If there's an issue with the tenant that's in violation, they're given 14 days to cure it, after which, then they can also move forward with it. So it allows a landlord to maintain safe, convenient property, also for the neighbors around it. That's also provision that's in the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act. The reason why this brought, was brought to head ultimately, besides, of course, my desire to make it uniform, was actually just speaking after Adam was sworn in, walking out Jan. And we can blame Ron Deal, because Adam and Ron discussed it, and Adam asked that question. So that's what sort of prompted me to move forward with it. Uh, I know that I'm also going to be asking candidly soon, our fiscal court to adopt a similar principle for the unincorporated. That way, our entire community is uniform. One final story, and I'll let you go, and I'll let you get to the more exciting agenda of swearing people in or naming people on your committees. Recently, over the last year, I have seen the same woman get evicted from two places in Fort Thomas. Unfortunately, you have a very generous community. And I say unfortunately because of this particular situation. There are people that will exploit people in this community and throughout Campbell County and throughout Northern Kentucky, and candidly, throughout the world. In your community, you have a woman that goes in, she tells the same story. Typically, it's that she's going through a divorce. I've now had the unfortunate privilege of being, seeing her in criminal court, as well as in, uh, of course, in the eviction proceedings, uh, multiple times. And she's been going through that divorce for several years, apparently, now. She always tells usually the landlord that she only has one child, but she has multiple children. And she moves in. She knows that law better than any landlord or tenant, for the most part, and she knows Fort Thomas has not adopted it. So she plays the games with the landlord. She has then run the clock down, usually five or six months out by the time the landlord finally has to take action. And they are out probably six, $7,000 out, that they've been unable to take in at least. She claims, of course, she cries, she asks for it, they finally evict her. If, she usually hands them some money. What happens? They come to court, they swear under oath, they are unaware by even accepting any money, because they just want some of their money back. What happens? The proceeding has to be re-initiated. That costs a landlord money, she gets to stay in longer. She's finally evicted after another, again, that 60 days. So she's been there usually about eight months in your community, taking advantage of one of your members of your community. So what does she do? She finds another landlord in this community and rents from them, gives them the same story, and it starts over. So she has now lived in your community without paying much rent for over a year. And your school system is fantastic, um, but with that being said, that's two people in the community that I can point to with the same person that's taken advantage of two incredibly nice couples in this community. So this would provide them an opportunity, because most of the time, they don't enter a lease. It's usually a handshake, because people in this community trust one another. And you hear a sad story about a woman going through a divorce with children that she has to care for, or a child, your heart bleeds, and you want to help her out. This would protect her, this would protect those individuals as well, and give them an opportunity to make sure that they're protected. So on behalf of the children and those people in your community, I ask that you give strong consideration. You have pros and cons of it, but this is a perfect balance between landlord protection and tenant protection. It does not weigh one way or the other. So, and I'm open to any questions that you guys have.
Uh, great synopsis. Thank you very much. Um, can a lease supersede the Act?
The lease can supersede certain provisions of the Act, yes.
But not all of the Act?
Not all of the Act.
Like evictions is going to go by the Act?
The evictions go by, that actually can vary from it if you truly do agree with it. And mind you, this is only for residential, primarily. There are certain, uh, it does apply to certain businesses or associated, but there are certain exceptions. So when you speak of this Act, uh, you want to concentrate more on a landlord-tenant issue, not business-oriented, though it does have implications. But I believe, uh, that, yes, you can modify even that provision of it, the eviction, should you really want to move forward with a 30-day, though most landlords want to defer to the seven-day.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So what was the history of this? Have you, you remember Thomas before, Mayor?
No, I, I was very aware of this when I was, had rental property in Newport years ago. And yes, I remember when Newport implemented. I don't know if I was on the commission then or not, but, uh, quite frankly, it's never been an issue. I've never heard of it as an issue in Fort Thomas. Obviously, you hear it on a regular basis, because you're dealing with it.
Right, and, and that's why part of the issue that I brought it forward was because of those issues that I've, I've seen over the last few years. It's unfortunate, but, and most people don't realize it. And also, some people incorporate. Why? Because they're smart enough to know that if they incorporate, um, then they're at least given some sort of shield of protection through your typically a limited liability corporation. But this, you have to be represented when you have an LLC, and they don't realize that as well. So it's, this spells it out very clear to individuals, but also the system. Um, and in speaking, and Ron, forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn, but when we were discussing it, I believe it was brought up by Mr. Ellison years ago, and then it sort of went by the wayside for.
Yeah, I think that it was placed in statute maybe 2000, or, or no.
I, I can't recall when it was.
I want to say.
It's been a good number of years.
I want to say it was back in, I've been here too long, but I, it was brought forward at some point when I think it first became statutory scheme. And it was discussed internally, but I don't know that it ever made the council for consideration. And since that time, we've not had anyone approach or the city to request that we adopt it.
I, I think it should go to a committee, and I'd also like to talk to some of the, does rent a lot of apartments and see if, because if there is a potential for a lease to supersede something in that, I think we need to let some of the, the rent, the rental owners know that, that we're discussing this, that they can adjust to the lease if they need to.
And what I can do is, as a courtesy, is provide you guys with, um, at least my best understanding of the law of what can and cannot be modified under it.
I mean, any existing lease wouldn't be modified by this, right?
No, I, I can't imagine, unless you give it some retroactive effect, yeah, that the existing, that's going to hold true until any new lease, so, because I don't recall any retroactive provision in the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Act.
You know, even or not, the US Constitution has a provision regarding impairment contracts. And I, you know, I would think that would cover this, you can't adopt a statute that appears in existing contracts.
Well, you of all people would know better even than myself.
Is that right? Interesting.
I mean, it makes sense, right? That you can't enter a agreement, something that is covered.
I absolutely agree with that. Whether, that, the fact that it was constitutionally protected, I was unaware of, but I think it, it is, yeah. I, I agree with the provision.
A month-to-month tenancy, would it require just 30 days' notice? Or do you have to give 10-day written notice to, that you're going to terminate that arrangement, and then 30 days' notice?
Oh, are you talking about the holdover tenancies?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, if there's a holdover tenancy, then you have to give just a 30-day notice, written notice that, hey, in 30 days, I'm, you're, we're done, we're terminated, we're just terminated, because you're a holdover tenant, meaning, of course, the lease has expired, uh, and at this moment, I would like you just to leave. I want to rent the property, vacate the property, and so that's a 30-day written notice. It's a week-to-week, and everyone thinks it's funny, but there are lots of people that go to week-to-week. And the other issue we have, and I know it's, this is sort of an odd thing, but one of the number-one eviction issues we have, and it's an issue with law enforcement that, um, as well, let's say you have a friend of the family, or candidly, an 18-year-old that stays at your house. You bring in that, the 18-year-old is now 30 years old, and/or you've brought a friend in, and they've overstayed their welcome. You've invited them, because they have gone through a nasty divorce. You want to help them out. It's now been a year and a half, and they said they just needed a few months to get on their feet. They're a holdover tenant. Whether they're paying you or not, because an 18-year-old gets certain inherent constitutional rights, uh, certain protections, but at the same time, where, how does the police handle it when you have an out-of-control 30-year-old kid living in mother and father's basement, and you want them out? You have to evict them. You can't say that they're trespassing.
Sure, they hold over month-to-month.
That there, it just depends on if they have entered into some sort of agreement, even by payment. Are they giving them money each month out of a paycheck? And so it's very fact-specific about whether, under those circumstances, how are they providing it? Typically, 30 days is always the best, but some people do seven, every seven days are giving money. So it's just a fact-specific situation. But, um, that's where the holdover tenancy comes in. And it's very nice, because it spells out for it, whereas, as you can see, the holdover tenants, um, in fact, there are provisions that if you don't give notice within 30 days at the end of the lease, it gives them an additional 60 days. So there's a lease ends, they don't fail to give that notice, they're there an extra 90 days, and there's nothing the landlord can do about it right now. So it's, it also, that's another issue that it also helps protect.
Well, I, I, your goal is very valuable here. I mean, I think we need a lot more of this in hearings like this, where you have all kinds of municipal counties, small counties, um, so I appreciate you taking the time to do this. I can't think of any reason not to do that.
I can't either.
Not to do it. Nevertheless, uh, Mayor makes a good point. I think we should go ahead and refer to what law laws amongst us.
Yeah, I would think so, sure.
And, um, you know, just to make sure there isn't anything out there that we haven't thought of. I mean, it's just, so, I guess.
Yeah, that would be the procedure to go to law labor license. And like I said, I'd like to have a couple of conversations with some folks, just to bet them aware that we're looking at.
No, I, I would encourage you to talk to all your landlords and even people that rent in this community, and speak to them. I can't imagine that a single landlord, uh, that would object to it. Um, and candidly, we have, I, I won't, don't want to call them slumlords, and it's, but own that lots, lots, and lots of property, and of course, it's nice, because they are held to a certain standard.
Sure.
Um, but with that being said, no, I, I encourage you to speak to them and see what their opinion is.
I'm a, I'm a landlord. I have multiple houses in Fort Thomas and then surrounding cities. And after reading through this, after it was first brought up, it scares me that Fort Thomas doesn't have this. I wish, I wish we were voting tonight to not divert the committee, but if we need to divert a committee, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
But either way, I just appreciate your time. I appreciate the consideration. Um, so thank you for, any other questions before I let you continue on?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
There was a motion to refer to law labor and license. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Beadle.
Hi.
Mr. Peterman.
Hi.
Mr. Blau.
He wants to make a motion, but I'll do it now.
An emergency on the second reading, too, right? Okay. All right, we are down to Finance Committee, reporting dispersments.
Reporting of dispersments, December 28th through February 8th, 2019. General fund, $241,229.10. Tower Park Fund, $2,488.51. Public Works KDOT Fund, $98,127.44. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.88. CBD Revitalization, $2,710.49. Waste Fee, $90,173.83. Police Fire Pension Fund, $92,667.76. Total, $528,538.1. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants numbered 503A through 5250 be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for that payment. Mr. Cameron, chairperson, Mr. Beadle, window, Mr. Cameron, member.
Move to confirm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Beadle.
Hi.
Mr. Blau.
Hi.
All right, we are down to Ordinance Resolutions and Orders. Ordinance 001, 2019, Street Apportionment for 2018 Resurfacing Program.
This is a summary of ordinance number 001, 2019, and ordinance confirming the city engineer's estimate of the cost of the improvement and certificate of apportionment for the improvement of Pentland Place from its intersection with Highland Avenue to its intersection with Grand Avenue, Sabre Court from its intersection with David Drive to its intersection with Pentland Place, and David Drive from its intersection with Sabre Court to its terminus. All in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereto, as submitted by the city engineer and as approved by the Board of Council. Approving and allowing a special assessment against the abutting property owners and providing for its payment, directing the city clerk to publish an abstract of this ordinance, and directing the city treasurer to prepare and distribute the assessment bills requiring all abutting property owners to pay the improvement assessment. The special assessment rates are set out below for the near foot, and fronting on listed streets are assessed against the real estate of the owners thereof at the stated cost per foot. Pentland Place, $18.05 for the city. Parkfoot for property owner, $12.05. Total cost, $515,000. Sabre Court, city portion, $11.41. Property owner portion, $11.41. Total cost, $68,150. David Drive, city portion, $10.07. Property owner portion, $10.07. Total cost, $57,500.
All right. Any motion for approval for that? Vote to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron.
Hi.
Mr. Bowman.
Hi.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beadle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye. Thank you all. Ordinance 002, 2019, amending the Personnel and Procedures Manual.
This is a summary of ordinance 002, 2019, and ordinance amending ordinance number 12, 2016, known as the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, adopted on December 19th, 2016, by amending the smoking policy and adding terminal leave policy and vacation carryover policy to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. An employee unable to work due to work-related injury would be eligible to carry over leave time on a prorated basis. Certain qualified employees may transfer some terminal leave into the city's 401A defer compensation match program. Smoking is prohibited activity in all departments, offices, and meeting rooms of city buildings.
All right, that is the first reading, so we don't need any action on that. Now we're down to Municipal Order, M01, 2019.
Municipal Order, M01, 2019, and municipal order reappointing Mark Leopold as a member of the City of Fort Thomas Street Commission for the City of Fort Thomas and setting his term of office.
All right, down to Executive Order, E001, 2019. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Back to, yeah, a vote. Good catch. Who wants to make a motion for that?
I'd move to approve.
Who wants to second? Who wants to vote on it? Why don't you ask everybody, see what they say?
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beadle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Aye. Now, Executive Order, E001, 2019.
Executive Order, E001, 2019, and executive order appointing Helen Blau as a member of the Renaissance Ward of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting her term of office.
And no action is required on that. Thank you for volunteering and being part and now being on the board. Thank you very much. That's great. All right, I will entertain another motion if someone would like to move us.
No executive session.
Yes, it is an executive session.
Move, go into executive session, consider laying evidence.
Yeah, second.
Do we need to cite the statute?
Yeah, does the statute need to be cited for going in an executive session?
I think that's part of the minutes.
All right, 61 debt.
Point 180, or 810.
10B. All right, we are going into executive session. So thank you all. Oh, is there a second? Who's second?
Second.
Okay, Adam's second. Do we need to vote on it? Give the roll call again.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowden.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Beadle.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Blau.
Thank you all for coming to the meeting tonight. Appreciate everybody's attendance and all the conversation. It was a good meeting.